What?
All right. So it is 2:30. This is a special city council meeting for the City Council of Montrose on December 13th, 2022. And call the meeting to order and roll call, please.
Dave Frank?
Present.
Present.
Doug Vasco?
Present.
Jayden Reed?
Present.
Middleberry?
Here.
All city councillors are present.
Thank you. And we are going to have a slight change to our agenda. We are going to put item number four as our first action item, the adaptive reuse project and business incentive agreement for the Pomona Brewing Company Business Expansion Project. City Council's consideration of an adaptive reuse project and business incentive agreement for the Pomona Brewing Company Business Expansion Project, and this is Anthony Russo from our business development team.
And Mr. Mayor, before we proceed, I'm going to need to recuse myself from consideration of this matter.
Thank you. We'll give you time to exit the room. Probably will in a minute. Let's let David have the time. And actually, we'll go ahead and have the owners of Pomona and the representatives come up. Yeah, just right there, Scott. And we have a handheld mic that we'll have you guys pass back and forth if you don't mind. Yeah, that one works much better. Thank you. All right.
Okay.
Anthony, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming today for the special session. I really do appreciate it. There we go. Thank you.
Yep.
We are, we have been working together now, Scott and Kevin, myself, for several months. Kevin has been looking at starting up a brewery on the other side of town, on Ninth Street, right on Ninth and Townsend. And we are, we are currently looking at seeing the building done sometime in the spring of 2023. They're hoping grand opening will be somewhere February 15th. The request came to us in order to put a kitchen in place. What they're looking to do is have a service, full-service restaurant along with their brewery, where they'll be having, I think it's 10 barrels in the back.
Seven barrels.
Yeah, seven, seven barrels in the back. And they'll continue to grow. They're also going to have a drive-through window to allow for food to be taken to go from that location. So that's exciting as well. But with that, I'll hand it over to you two and let you take it from here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I would like to reiterate your appreciation you guys do for our community. Number one, you're volunteering. And then in the month of December, when you don't have a spare hour to have a special session like this, I really appreciate you hearing it out. So with that, the project is about a $1.1 million project. As you can see, there's about $650,000 in purchase price of the property, and then about another $450,000 to $500,000 in actual construction and tenant improvements onsite. I think the intent is to have your traditional brew pub, which is family-friendly, and trying to have that flavor that we kind of have come to be able to create what we did down at the distillery for the fishery family, and to be able to have that on the north side of town and have a food venue there. I had gotten wind that Kevin and Chelsea were looking for someplace, and at the same time was negotiating a price on this. And so we got together, and one thing led to another. And so we're working together as landlord-tenant situation. And he's going to have the business and a drive-through situation and be able to take his experience from where he was at San Juan Brews and the last 18 years of his restaurant experience in his life to having his own thing. So with that, that's kind of the big picture, but I'll let Kevin kind of.
No, I think that's a great summary. And again, echo Scott's sentiment. Thank you all for holding this special session for us today. So really, I guess what I'm envisioning is to begin with, a small Horsefly. Now, with that being said, I think we're going to do things a little bit differently. We're not going to have as an extensive menu to begin with. I think for several reasons, my passion, of course, is the beer. I do love to cook. I grew up in food service since 15 in Wisconsin, worked at Colorado Boy here locally, and of course, San Juan Brews recently, all successful ventures that I've been a part of. So that's taking that experience, putting in a smaller kitchen to begin with, and then having that room to grow. If and when we need to, I think it's very, it's exciting for us to have our vision of what we want to offer, but we also need to listen to the community as far as food and what flavors. Our experience at San Juan Brews was, you need food. So I think to open just a brewery, I think would be successful, but I think adding that, that food and having that element to bring the kids in, to have people sit a little bit longer, and really enjoy kind of the patios that we're going to be putting in and just that north end of town. There's a lot of exciting growth going there. So I think this is a perfect time for us to really look at this. So I think that's kind of there. So yeah, we're going to do probably six, seven signature items, and then again, grow from there if we need to. So but we'd rather start a little small, kind of under, under-promise, over-deliver, and make sure we're hitting our efficiencies and doing everything proper before we start adding, you know, a huge menu, because I think that's, that's not good. And I think looking at this grant and what this, the grant would do for us is really set us up for success. When we first started looking at having a kitchen, it was, it was nothing to the scope of what we're about to launch, hopefully. So just hearing about the grant and then going through this, talking with Anthony as well, and just getting feedback, and I think we're, we're on the right track.
And then just, I think, just seeing the need north of town for a restaurant, and a wider variety of restaurants on that end of town that's, that's starting to grow with Car Outdoors, as well as with the apartment complex, I can't think of what it was.
Basecamp.
It was camp. Basecamp, the car wash, we break ground on this week across the street, and just seeing more activity in that area. And we just think that this end of town needs to have a bigger, wider variety of restaurants for those people that work at the courthouse and, and the north end of town.
One of the things that we have discussed in the past in some other projects is that we have with a commercial kitchen assistance, that we provide equipment that cannot walk away.
Correct.
And looking at the, the list here, the requested assistance is FFE, griddle, fryer, sink, refrigeration. Gridles and fryers can leave. Do we have a breakdown of, a more comprehensive breakdown of what items, what we had previously considered a non-mobile item?
Those would, those are very similar to what we considered with Trattoria, because they're built in to the main unit. And a major part of that kitchen that would be left behind. So it's not a countertop unit, like a panini press or a coffee maker or something like that. It's a unit that, I mean, technically, yes, you could remove that fryer and take it away, but the likelihood of that happening, if Kevin were to leave and Scott's keeping it as a restaurant after building it out, those are going to remain behind. So it follows that same pattern of thought. And I pulled up the Trattoria just to see what we did for them. And we based this listed eligible projects based on what we had previously considered. And theirs was $250,000, much larger, more expensive kitchen, pizza oven, and those types of things where this is a smaller scale.
And I think it's important, too, is that the applicant is SNJ, which is Scott Stryker, not the brewery. So the, the ownership of the equipment and everything inside will actually stay with Stryker and his company.
So I have a question. Whether the owner is, well, it is Stryker, but as a restaurant, not that specific restaurant.
But the, the addition of a restaurant would bring in sales tax and restaurant tax. And this is essentially an expansion from when they just did some beer downtown. I mean, I know their projected revenues are, are kind of confidential. That's their business plan. But do we have some estimates of what kind of return on our investment we would be getting in terms of, of hard sales tax collection back to the city?
Sure. So year one, I'm hoping my projections, of course, when I built all that, the kitchen was a much smaller scale. So with that being said, I, and also experience at San Juan Brews, which we didn't have a kitchen, I would be surprised if we didn't hit at least half a million the first year. 500, that's my goal. I think that's very attainable.
In sales.
In sales. So if we calculate, you know, if we look at just the part that's not restricted to the rec district collection, which the city doesn't get, or even the police tax, which is specific to our public safety sales fund, we look at just 3% on that. Someone's going to, I can't do math, Dan Talk.
And according to your numbers, you are looking at year two and three on the growth was, was pretty steady.
Correct.
Okay. And that's just sales tax. That's not, and also including restaurant tax. And that's not, that's just, that's, to me, that's like actual dollars and cents, and not the value of more business on the north side of town, increased jobs, you know, that, yeah, there's other things you could measure. I just wanted to talk about just the sales tax collection piece.
And you mentioned confidential numbers. I have talked with Phil and Melanie at Horsefly, off the record, of course, and just knowing an estimate of what they do. And I think we're way under what we're going to do. Just knowing they're very similar in setup and kind of that environment and the experience. So I think we're, we're going to be really surprised with how much comes through.
Has, have you taken into consideration the other brew pub that's going, supposedly going out?
The distillery?
Outdoor, yeah. And they're going to be offering restaurant also, so.
Sure, sure. Well, and I think likes attract. And I think with the movement of having that restaurant, the Italian restaurant out there that Bill had just mentioned, us, I think now we've become kind of that area to go to. Not that I want to take anything away from Main Street or south of town, but I think that growth and that excitement will carry forward. As far as the distillery, I, I don't know where they're at, what they're planning, when they're planning on opening. But I, from what my understanding is, very minimal, is their main focus is more the distillery, not a brewery necessarily. Yes, a restaurant. But I think we can complement each other and support each other and drive traffic both ways. So we're only three blocks away from them, and I think that'd be, you know, it's kind of a neat.
I noticed, yeah, I noticed that you anticipate hiring eight employees. Will, will that be at minimum wage? Or are you going to have some kind of incentive for?
Yes, the growing rate's not minimum wage for restaurant workers. It's, I think it's state is what, 954 plus tips. Most people are, I would have to assume, I know what we paid at San Juan Brews, 13 on up, just depending on that position. So with a bigger kitchen, with the bigger scope of this project, we're probably looking 10 to 15 full-time employees. So.
We recently approved your liquor license?
We were, yes.
So you already have that in place?
We have the liquor license, brewers notice.
All of the, all of the other, other primary components for the business are in place?
Correct, yes.
Any other questions?
Are there any programs out there we can use to try to get additional financial assistance through grants through the state, through Region 10, DOL, or anything?
Yeah. And in this case, I mean, I think we've tapped into everything we could possibly tap into. We've, we've talked to Region 10, and he's talked to Region 10 as well. And I think whatever funds that were accessible, they've gone through. I mean, obviously, they came in for the facade through, through the DART program to help with the outside of the building. So that was a big help from that standpoint. And really, other than that, there's no other funds that are available at this time that we have seen. Yeah, it actually, it's actually in the, and if you look inside the, the packet, I'm going to pull it back up, you'll actually find inside there a breakdown of all the contributions and where they came, all the funding came from. It's on the, the first page there.
Are we providing anything as far as building permits, water tap?
I haven't really been in communication on the water tap side of things. Has that been brought up at all?
It hasn't been brought up.
Utilities, utility abatements or anything? Hasn't, right?
Yeah, we're probably looking to bring that up at some point. If we, we're looking at his water flows to make sure that it is needed. So we'll be, if it is needed, he's going to, we're going to do a water test on his system. And then we're prepared to, we need to upgrade that from a 5/8 to a 1/8 or 3/4 to a 1/8.
So we hadn't really talked about that yet, not far enough along in that piece. Building permit fee waivers, and once I have a cost worksheet on the final project, we would waive the traditional, the plan check fee, the review fee, and the construction use tax. Those are the three city fees that we normally waive for commercial buildouts. And those don't come before council.
I think I'd like to see what, what you think our cost breakdown is on those, those items that we might or will be providing as part of this incentive.
Did Archie do a worksheet for you? So I might have that in my email. Is it in the packet? It's not, right?
We did not include.
Yeah, I can pull that up.
I have a question. Breweries use a lot of water, right?
Correct.
And we sell that water to you, right?
Yes.
One other thing I wanted to bring up is that this program isn't specifically tied to brand-new businesses. Can current or existing businesses bring forward a project and have assistance? The thing that brings this to mind is that we recently discussed how we are having to raise our sewer rates because of a federal and state mandates on discharge, and that there are a lot of our current and older restaurants that have, I would call them jury-rigged grease traps. If one of these older restaurants comes to us, would we be able to offer them assistance on some of these upgrades and remodels in order to reduce the amount of biological contaminants in our water stream?
For other locations that might come across something like that, we definitely would consider that and make that recommendation to council to try to bring them up to the new standards and make sure that we have better operating systems. When we've talked with the new shelter distilling, that's one of the major things we talked to them about was the grease trap for the restaurant, and then also the industrial pretreatment to make sure the BOD levels and stuff were reduced prior to sending it to the treatment plant. And I know that you've had those discussions with our team on all that stuff. And we would consider that for any of our restaurants, breweries, bars here in the community. It's an unknown when anybody's taking over one of those. Doesn't apply here, because we're going from an auto sales to a new business. But in a lot of the existing, if somebody's trying to take it over, fix it up, we'd definitely love to hear from them on that.
Thank you.
Bill? My question would be, is this coming out of this year's budget or next year's budget?
So this project, if approved, would come out of the 23 budget.
Okay, which means we have what, $700,000 approved for that, what, retail enhancement? Is that where it'd be coming from?
So this one can come from a couple different avenues. What we've traditionally done for our general type of business expansion or new business projects, that's not really adaptive reuse of the old historic building on Main Street or something like that, is we use our undesignated surplus. So council would approve, and it would just come out of our general fund savings account. Another pot of money that could be tapped into would be the approximately $700,000 worth of tax increment financing money that's still sitting in that pot to be used for traditionally downtown projects, like the next one we're going to talk about, Chowdown, getting rid of the ink tank in that building, the Vine Building project. So this technically isn't on our Main Street, but we've expanded since the beginning of that program to include all of our business districts around the community. So it doesn't just have to be used downtown. So if council didn't want to just use general fund, you could take it out of that available TIF fund that's just sitting there, leftover from the old DDA.
That was my next question.
The other question, do we have a, for example, like dartboard? We have a, when we do a dart, give people money through the dartboard, there's percentages, and there's a system. You've got to do this, you've got to do that. Is, is, is this part of, of not dart, but do we have some kind of a system where percentages and homeowner, business owners, how many business owners do we help? Do we help the same one over and over again because they're the ones that's maybe developing here in town? Can you kind of give me a little insight as to that?
Sure. So I think on this one, if you look at the numbers in the packet, we try to stay between 8 and 12% of the total project costs is what the city historically has put into projects like this. And so that's why we always put in, I'm just looking at what's in here, the total project cost of 1.1 million, and the request is 109,000. So that's at approximately that 10% mark. So it fits in with that criteria. Also, with the commercial kitchen program, that's a program that was established by DART several years ago, even back to DDA times. We had discussions about trying to get more restaurants in our community, especially in downtown districts. And now the north is becoming more and more important to serve the north part of our community. But when we created the commercial kitchen program, it was primarily talking about downtown and trying to get more nightlife and more opportunities for people that could stay open after 6:00 PM, and people could come after work and, and go down into our business districts and get a drink or a bite to eat, and really start to create some vibrancy throughout all of our business districts. So that's why we created the commercial kitchen program. And this fits into all those criteria. It's meeting, checking all those boxes on why would we want to help with a commercial kitchen? It's because we want to create more opportunities for people to eat and drink throughout our community, not only to attract new people to town, but to have a better quality of life and more options available for our existing residents. And so I think it meets all of those things. As far as your question on kind of parameters, on do we serve the same businesses over and over, we haven't really talked about that much in our DART conversations, or back with the DDA, or the city when we bring things here, or the URA. We take every project as it comes along on a case-by-case basis, and we look at the merits of that particular project, whether it's, you know, a Scott Stryker, or another developer, builder, contractor out in the community. We would look at the project based on the merits of that project, not the person who's bringing it before us. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. And I, and I think to answer your question, Doug, as far as what we gave on the, the breaks, it was $3,000, sorry. It was $3,109 total for the waivers on fees and, and city tax.
So they've received, or they will receive about $300,000 already?
No, no, $3,000.
Oh, $3,000.
$3,000, that's it. Yeah, yeah, no, no. No, just $3,000 on the permits and plan checks, yes.
I'm trying to put my, my hat on and think about what people contact me about, people who live in Montrose. And they say things like, you guys should make there be more restaurants. Okay, how? I think, I mean, short of, we're not going to open a restaurant. That'd be, we'd, yeah. But, you know, the people who live on the north side of town have said, I wish you spent some money on the north side of town. You know, you spend a lot of money on the other side of town. People are saying, I wish there were more jobs. I wish it looked nicer as you come into Montrose. People would feel like, oh, this is a place worth stopping. This city seems to have some stuff going on. And so to me, those are things I've heard from my constituents and some of the reasons that I'm supportive. I think that I have run previously for council under the guise of being pro-business and pro-development and trying to help when things like this want to happen. And so given the different things we can do to help, we can't go and, and dig dirt for them. At least, that's not in my skill set. But what I can do is be supportive when businesses come with a really solid plan. And, you know, the numbers themselves that return on the investment, it really, the increase that we're going to see in sales tax, it, it starts to pay for itself after less than eight years. So I'm, I'm supportive for those reasons.
Are there any other questions? In that case, I would entertain a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I'll accept public comment first. Got to jump back to my script here. And seeing none, now I would entertain a motion.
I suppose, given that I just waxed poetic, I should do it. I would make a motion to approve an adaptive reuse project and business incentive agreement for the Pomona Brewing Company Business Expansion Project as presented.
Question on it. Do we need to identify where we want that money to come from?
Um, we could if we care a lot. Do you?
We've got that, that DDA money, and I think that would be a very good purpose for it.
You want to specify that, like where it comes from?
We can certainly do that, and that is not out of line to adapt your motion, because you're not actually finished making it, because there hasn't been a second.
Did we have enough in that TIF?
There's approximately $700,000.
Okay. So can I amend that motion that we use that fund?
Since there hasn't been a second, then that motion hasn't been formalized yet. So at this point, you can adapt it without having to do anything else.
And that the money should come from that previous DDA TIF fund account?
It's, yes, if you, yeah, from the, it's technically sitting in our capital fund, but it's earmarked for downtown capital.
Okay.
For that, from the earmarked funds?
Yeah, what we usually call at the meetings is the downtown TIF.
Okay. So the, that money should come out of the funds earmarked for downtown capital improvement projects?
All right. I think that's pretty specific. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
I think that myself, I might be supportive of it, if, if we would reduce that much, that amount of money to about half. Like, like you, I get calls from my constituents, and they're saying, why are we paying for a whole new kitchen? And they made, other people have made references. I've had calls. I've also had a couple personal people come up to me and, and recommend that. I know how hard it is to have and start a business. I've had three of them. But, you know, I, I don't want the city, or people to think of the city as, as, you walk on there and you knock, knock on the door and you open it up, and they say, give me the money. And we just give it to them. I'm willing to help, but, but not at the full amount. So that's just my comment.
All right, thank you. In that case, we'll call the question. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Dine?
Yes.
Doug Vasco?
Yes.
Ed Middleberry?
No.
Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you.
I would just like to say in closing, again, thank you. And we're really excited about this project. It's, it's going to be, you know, a really cool project on this side of town. And I think we're going to put together a, a look and flavor of this building that the families are going to enjoy. And it's going to be here for a long time. So thank you, guys. Thank you.
Actually, if Kevin wouldn't mind.
Kevin, you grab David.
Tapping him on the shoulder as you go out.
David Reed.
Mr. Reed. Thank you. We're going to move on to item number four, adaptive, or what was item three, business incentive agreement for the Rathbone Hotel. City Council, consideration of a business incentive agreement for the Rathbone Hotel at 33 South Cascade Avenue in Montrose. Anthony?
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. We are currently bringing this before you for, to, to access the TIF-eligible funds that are available. We have looked at the project extensively, and we've identified certain areas that are TIF-eligible, which is the masonry work, which is historic, the historic windows, the fire suppression system, and the exterior improvements, landscaping, sidewalk, and the like. The total amount of those expenses is $893,750. The total requested amount is 581. One of the things that you'll, you'll notice here is that the budget was about $1.4 million less. Part of those increases in expenses is due to the masonry work on the outside of the building. As they were redoing the historic windows, some of the masonry work came undone, causing, causing areas that they weren't previously going to renovate or have to change. areas that they weren't previously going to renovate or have to change to need improvements now. Those improvements are only necessary if they move forward with the windows and actually put those historic windows back in place. Otherwise, they could actually move forward and leave the existing windows there. They wanted to stick to their, to their initial program, which is why they've decided to move forward and which is why you see the increase in budget from previous documentation. That and there was just some other minor issues that came up along the way, which is normal to the process. You'll see that the owner contribution is $1.8 million into the project, traditional loan funding, 3.3 million, and then Region 10 supported at $400,000. The yearly budget for salaries is 375 with 12 jobs created and they have projected revenue of $1.25 million. And that is the summary. And with that, we have Clay joining us remotely. Oh, okay. Go ahead. We'll pass it over to Bill first.
Clay, I'm going to, this is Bill. I'm going to just add a couple of things and then we'll see if the man wants to turn it over to you. I just wanted to mention, there was some confusion with members of the public that reached out to us on, the beginning of the narrative talks about it being over budget. And we don't want people to think that because they're over budget, that's why they're asking the city for money, because that's not the case. We've been working with representatives on the project here for several months. And based on all of the things that we traditionally helped with as outlined by Anthony, and they're in the packet, those are all things that we helped with on like the Vine Building, the Chowdown Building, removal of asbestos, doing mitigation, doing window upgrades to make them look historic and take them back to historic type of window. We usually talk about, they could put in modern windows, but we'd really like them to put in the windows that match the building and the historic nature of the building. I believe they've met with the Historic Preservation Commission and had discussions with them as well. So all of those things being considered, before they ever found this issue that put them over budget, we were going to bring a recommendation of a little over $300,000. And so after that, they asked, could you please increase our request to the amount that you see before you today? So just didn't want people to be confused thinking that now that they have this extra cost, they're coming to the city. We've been working with them for a while, as we would with anyone who purchased a historic building and wants to do an adaptive reuse project. And this is something we're really excited about, way back to even before me coming to the city. The KP Building has been talked about. Ben and I were chatting. It was, when he was here at the city, it was talked about with Virgil. And so we've kind of reserved the pot of money that we just talked about a minute ago, the downtown TIF funds that were created for projects just like this. So I just want to put that out there because there was some confusion on, oh, they're over budget, so they're asking the city for money. I don't want Clay to be represented in that light. I don't think that's what they're doing.
Can you still clarify for me? Because it seems like we've been talking about this project for so long. We have not seen a request from them yet. So they, I was under the impression we'd given them money and now they were asking for more. This is the first time they've asked for money. They're just asking for a little more than some of the prior conversations had been. Okay, so they're not coming back saying, thanks for giving us money, we want more?
No, this is the first time they've ever come before you with an actual financial request.
Okay. And this is a building that, gosh, so many people are so, have said they're so excited to see that it's finally being developed because it's been sitting there empty and dilapidated for a while.
And I think we may want to go into executive session. It's up to City Council.
Yes.
I think one of the, a couple of things that concern me, part of the cost with the masonry. And when we've, we've had a dozen different engineering firms look at this once before and talk about upgrades that the building needed. And I've been around construction long enough to know that anytime you have an old building, you've got a problem with brickwork because the old mortar was mostly lime. So if that was totally overlooked and not anticipated, I think that was an error on your part. Do you have a comment on that?
So I hear what you're saying. A lot of it comes down to the structural engineers. Like you can look at the building at face value and then you need to bring us somebody that, you know, me as my own experience, just as a contractor, but then we brought in structural engineers to look at the project in detail, to say, what is this going to take? And so, and within structural engineers, everybody has their own opinion. And so we've brought in the structural engineers to look at that. And so you combine what you need to do structurally, but you also combine what you need to do architecturally. And so while I can get a mason to go and just re-point the building, it takes a special mason to re-point the building and do it in a manner that, like Bill had talked about, it's done with the character and integrity like this building was done right here that we're in, where you go and get a mason that specializes in historical tuck pointing, that knows how to do it to the Secretary of Interior Standards for historical restorations. We take the mortar out of the joints, we send it to a lab and have it, you know, reported on to find out what percent is lime, what percent is sand, what percent is, you know, so you know exactly when you put the new mortar in there, that it's exactly the same as what it was before. So you have, so you can match everything like it was. And then to try and find brick to match that same building to make it, to make that tie in, isn't easy. And you can see all the work they're doing out there and how slow and tedious it is. And you can see the work as we started on the one section moving to the right. And so I think it hasn't been overlooked, but it's just expensive work to do. And then it has to be combined with an engineer that can stand behind it. So I think it's, it's not, it's not a surprise. It's just kind of where these types of buildings are, they're just not cheap to do the masonry work on these types of buildings.
Yeah, I've been involved with one that was done before and it's pretty easy to pick out that there's a problem with your mortar that was originally used. That's why I was a little surprised to see that this was coming out as a concern now. And I think it was, in my opinion, it should have been fairly evident.
Yeah. And I would think it's, and maybe it's, you feel like it's came out recently. For us, it's came out just as a normal part of the process of the construction. You find out, you just gradually wade into it with the different experts in the field. So the roofing, you know, we bought, we bought a roofing contractor down here and said, here's what it is, what's it going to take? What's the low price, the medium price, the expensive price? And you kind of do that same thing with an engineer. Here's what the floor plan wants to do. Can this one single beam support this or are we going to have to split this and put in two separate beams and go down into the, below the crawl space and come back up with the structural footings? And so you're just gradually finding and investigating this process. And so it's probably made more difficult in the last three years, and Ed, you can probably appreciate this, it's probably been more difficult in the last three years on contractors because the price of construction has done this exponentially in 36 months. Like it is off the charts. Where you used to get a one-foot, a one-foot piece of conduit, per foot was $1.25. That same one-foot, two-inch conduit is $5.50. So it's gone up astronomical. And I just had two conversations today with the clients. One's doing a commercial building, convenience store west of town, and the other one was the car wash, the car wash. When they initially asked us, they sent us a set of schematic drawings and said, what's, and I need to give you this story because this is construction and it's really important to this conversation. Because they, they gave us a schematic set of drawings and said, what's this going to cost? And I said, and I took it out to a few subcontractors and based on our experience, I said, 1.7 million. And then they got construction drawings, nine months later, 2.8 million. So it's just, and that's the, that's the hard part of being a contractor because I feel like I'm in a fire, the fire range, but it's just where construction is right now. And I see it leveling off, but it's not been fun to be the guy delivering that message.
Leveling off at a high altitude, right?
Yeah, that's right. And so Doug, you make a good point, Mr. Vasco, about.
The fire suppression system also, is that just increased in the cost of having it put in or was that overlooked?
No, I think it's.
I'll jump in there just because I was the one that wrote up that document.
I'm sorry.
That's the, thank you. The fire suppression system, that, the reason that it's in there is that's something we normally cover. It's not because it increased. It was just something that we normally cover under the TIF, so it's added in there as a budget item as something we would cover. It's not an increase over the original budget. The only items that were an increase was the masonry work and then some of the structural issues that are in the building.
Doug, I had an opportunity to talk with the mason today, which was really interesting. I just, just over there looking at it to see as to why they were asking for so much for the masonry. It's not the scraping out of the mortar and putting it back in, they have a special tool for doing that. But it's actually the corbels that are on the building and some of the architectural work, they have to like take it down to something solid. And, and some of those are pretty solid to begin with and some of them aren't. And so that, that was part of the reasoning why they felt it was a little more complicated than, than what they figured based on the fact that they couldn't get up there and chip away at them corbels and, and stuff. And I was looking at the front, the front has a lot of detail. But, you know, again, city funds, I like to be a little conservative and I'll be honest with you, I could support about half of the amount that they're asking for, just because I realize that, that the construction process, I know he was talking about some of the structural stuff on the inside that had just come up. And I, like you said, finding an engineer that would say, oh yeah, we could do this for X amount of dollars.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if it wouldn't be appropriate to consider going into executive session at this point in time? I think there's some, some issues or some information that probably can only be discussed in executive session at this time relative to negotiations and purchase and sale of real estate. And so I think it would be more appropriate to move into executive session to discuss that because I do think it could have some impact on our discussions.
If you'd like to make that motion.
I would move that we go into executive session for the purpose of, do you want to read the?
I'm not sure which one of these applicable.
I think it's negotiations and purchase and sale of real estate, something like that.
Well, and before I read anything, it was suggested that we do it for legal advice.
Right. I mean, if you're in the middle of a meeting and you want to go into executive session and it's not on an agenda.
That would be fine, but it would entail me giving legal advice and I don't know what it is that you had in mind, so I'm not sure I can advise. That would be my only caveat.
Well, I can, I can tell you the general subject matter as it falls into the open meetings law, exceptions for executive session, one being with respect to purposes for negotiations, the other being with respect to the purchase and sale of real property.
Legal advice could be a component of either, but I think at this point it would be much safer so that we don't go outside the scope to stick with your suggestion.
Okay.
So this would be for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations under CRS 2464024E and also to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real, personal, or other property interest under CRS 2464024A.
I'll second that.
And the following additional details are provided for informational purposes. This would be the Rathbone Hotel.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Vasco?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll need to shut off the feed up there also.
We'll give Ben just a second to get back. It is 3:35 and we're going to reconvene our special city council meeting for December 13th, 2022. And we're going to resume our conversation. We're going to give our applicant, Mr. Bales, an opportunity to discuss his business plan and kind of let the citizens of Montrose know a little bit more about the project and kind of the vision of what that's going to be. Mr. Bales?
Dave Frank and thank you, everyone else. Sorry I could not be there today. The blizzard activity up in the front range delayed some of my flights and whatnot, so I'll be, be back tomorrow. But anyway, thank you all. So, yeah, we are looking forward to this project. We are developing a 17-room hotel, bar, and coffee shop at 33 South Cascade Avenue in the former KP Building. We're trying to tie in as much of the KP past and history as possible in the development and in the design work that we are doing. One of the most unique features of the building is the 26-foot vaulted ceilings upstairs where we're doing lofted suites upstairs, which will be a really unique feature to a hotel room. There's not one in Colorado. And we think guests are going to really enjoy that, specifically families traveling together. We have seven rooms downstairs, more standard rooms, as well as two ADA rooms. The lobby bar and cafe will be open all day and is accessible for anybody, hotel guests and the public alike. And we encourage it to be a place of gathering for the community and not just hotel guests. So we hope people will come in for coffee, cocktails, small bites and things like that and gather, have another gathering space in downtown. We're aiming for this to be absolutely the nicest hotel from a design and a guest experience standpoint in Montrose, even with the Fairfield Marriott coming to town. We believe that we have achieved this with our furniture selections, our contractor selections, and our overall architecture design package. Let me think if I'm listening here. That is about it as far as our business plan and what we are doing. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I don't see any in the room.
Anthony?
Clay, can you go into a little bit detail? I know that we've talked about some of the challenges facing the construction side of things, but I believe that in our previous conversations, some of that really came down to wanting to preserve the historic look. And as you were going through that, that's where some of these issues came up and then also some of the issues that, just surrounding wanting to keep the masonry right. Can you talk a little bit about that and wanting to keep that look and, and the comments that you've made to me about how you, you're trying to really make it a historic building here in the downtown area?
First thing, so I think, you know, when we first approached it, there were kind of two options. One was to do the full historic restoration and one was kind of to patch some of the, some of the things on the outside and just kind of do a baseline restoration where it needed it. I think one of the first times we had agave masonry, which is the crew out there that we ended up choosing, one of the first times we had them out, a piece of cement crumbled off the building and fell down about 30 feet. And it was kind of funny until it happened again three or four days later and the masons have continued noting it to happen. So first and foremost, I think there was a safety concern that we're addressing by our significant investment into the masonry. So that was, that's that. But I think what we wanted was to make downtown cohesive. And you all have done such an amazing job of restoring all of the buildings, including the one you're sitting in, like Scott mentioned, to a near-perfect level of quality. And we didn't want to be an outsider to that, especially with possible work happening in the courthouse, the county building. We, we wanted to match the facade of the rest of the buildings downtown and have a perfect level of historic restoration back to when it, how, how it was built.
If, if you were to not restore those windows back to historical and not go to the 10-foot windows and just leave them as is, would that masonry work, would it have been required or would you be able to get away with not doing it?
I think back to the safety point, knowing what we know now, which we did not know purchasing the building, we know we have to fix it regardless.
I have a question. When you talk about the historic nature and preserving all of it, what, what is the historic nature of the front on the first floor? Because it doesn't look great now. It clearly has been modified. And so can you tell me a little bit about your vision and, and your vision and how that fits in? Because I'm seeing a lot of black and glass. It's just interesting. I want to hear more about that first floor on the front.
Yeah, it'll be storefront glass going across. There have been some design changes per what the state office has asked us to do. So there has been some design changes that our architects have not updated in the renderings, but all of their comments are focused on kind of restoring the historic nature. So it will be storefront glass and then we will have, we'll kind of revive the archway that you see with the 33 above it will become the main entrance and kind of be revived as it once was, if you look at the historical pictures from the early 1900s. So for a long time, all the entrances to the building were running down first and the main entrance was not on Cascade. We're getting rid of that and bringing it back to its original look, where the entrance and there's a storefront on Cascade and that's it.
Any other questions?
You referenced the restaurant aspect of it, bar service. Could you give us a little idea of what that would be like as far as the public being able to use it?
I mean, it's full access just as any other bar in town. There's no hotel access until after the bar. So it'll be very delineated what is public access and what is hotel space.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Not for him. I have general questions about the project.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bales. I think that's it.
Of course. Thank you all.
All right. Moving on back to our general discussion. I just wanted to touch base really quickly with a comment that Mr. Yuluberry made and I would agree with that. I think that it's one of the things important to recognize, and I want to get it on the public record, that the city of Montrose is not here to fund projects that accidentally underfunded themselves. We're not here to be the golden goose where if you just misbid a project, you can come in and tap the city and get some free money. Having said that, I also want to recognize that this is an ongoing discussion, that this project has been, this is not a brand-new, oh my gosh, we messed up project. This is a project that we've been in long-term discussions with about incentivizing and helping them out. So having said that, one of the things that we also noted is that there's a lot of instability in that structure, that without fixing that structure, and Mr. Glassbell and I have been talking about that for the last two years, that we expect that a brick to come down and kill some citizen at any random moment. So I think having this masonry work done and having it done properly and having it done well, I think is critical.
I agree with you and I guess I would say that I appreciate what Clay is doing because he could have purchased this building and leveled it and built a new building there without the city's involvement. There's nothing we could have done to keep a modern building from going up there. And this is preserving part of our history here. And I think that's, I don't know how you put a dollar and cent value on it, but it does have value, tremendous value. And so I think we should appreciate the fact that he's willing to go the extra mile to preserve it with, of course, the assistance that we can help provide.
I think that's an excellent point. And one of the things that I like about it is looking at how much money a private developer is bringing to the table. For $1 that we put in as an investment on behalf of our community, where someone out there is coming in and saying, I'm going to match that with $9. That's a pretty good way to attract big money. This project was always going to take a lot of money and it wasn't as, there weren't, no one locally was stepping up to spend that kind of money on this project. And I'm glad to see that someone decided it was worth investing in, doing it right, and doing it to historical standards. And I think that's a lot for us to get, a return to our community for 10%.
And I'd like to also ask Mr. Bell, one of the things you had mentioned is that our normal incentive programs, we do tend to try to stay between 8% and 12% on our assistance on programs. Can you kind of tell us where this falls, this ask falls in that range?
Yeah, at the approximate $500,000 mark that's in there is approximately 10%. And this would be on the, we gauge the difference between the 8% to 12% as kind of a general sliding scale based on the impact to the community. And so if we know something is a brand-new business that we've never had before in our community, it's going to be adding to the quality of life and something new for everyone, it would be on that higher-end scale. If we, it's an expansion of a business or just doing some site improvements for a business that is already there, we have a few of those, it would be on the lower scale kind of thing. If one was going to add a bunch of high-paying jobs, it'd be on the higher scale. Just a few part-time jobs would be on the lower scale. So that's kind of how we judge these on that scale. This one would be on the highest end of the scale because it's a new business. We don't have a boutique fancy hotel in our community. It also is taking one of the oldest buildings in Montrose that's been sitting there waiting for a developer to come in and partner with our Historic Preservation Commission, the city, the state, you know, all of us, Region 10, to make something great happen and plan for the next 50 to 100 years, it would be on the highest end of that scale because the impact to our community is huge for all the reasons everybody around the table has already talked about. It's not just bringing in a hotel, because some people might say, well, we don't need a hotel, but it's adding to the integrity of our downtown and restoring that and preserving it for the next decade or decades, next century hopefully. And so it's really important to our community. One question that Mr. Yuluberry brought up and wanted me to elaborate on a little bit was the available funds. And so to explain a little bit, how did we, how did we get these downtown TIF funds, when I mentioned that pot of money? So for everyone's benefit, just a little bit of history on it. When we had a Downtown Development Authority, or DDA, we created a sales tax increment financing district that included the entire downtown area, the DDA district. We also included, created a real property tax increment financing district for property taxes. That was just prior to the recession. When the recession hit, the, while the DDA was in existence and doing their business, helping downtown businesses and expanding the Main Street program, the property values didn't come back for quite a long time. They were upside down. And so our property tax TIF never created an increment or new profit. But sales tax started to come back around in the downtown area the last couple of years the DDA was in existence. And so because sales got better and revenues increased, it created this pot of money we call an increment, very similar to our discussions when we talk about the URA in Colorado outdoors. There's a sales tax TIF and a property tax TIF out there. So these are the funds that were generated from that new sales tax revenue that we, Shaney and I brought before council and said, what do you want us to do with these funds? And council at the time said, we would like to meet the general intent of the DDA when they were around, and that was helping our small businesses in our community. So we'd like to not just throw this into our general fund, which we could have easily done, council had that prerogative. Instead, we set it aside to wait for projects just like this. And we've tapped into it on occasion when we redid the historic Vine Building project, when we removed the ink tank that was underneath the new Chowdown facility left over from the old Daily Press. We've done asbestos mitigation, brick facades, historic windows, storefronts, all those kinds of things that we're talking about this project. We've tapped into it every year as projects come along. And so we are now to the most sizable project that has come along. And so sometimes people get a little scared to spend that amount of money or invest that in our downtown businesses and the programs. But I think it's really important to look at how much the private side is bringing to the table, like Mayor Pro Tem Bynum brought up. It's not like we're asking to put in, or they're asking us to put in $500,000 and they're putting in $500,000. They're putting in $5 million, either their own cash or money that they're borrowing and they're going to be on the hook for. It's a variety and it's all outlined in the packet, but it's a really impactful project. It's from those pot of funds. So it's really important for people to know, this money we're talking about using doesn't compete with the money we put into street maintenance or capital improvements or street improvements. Two totally separate pots of funds. And so there's no worry that because we invest in this particular project, it's at the cost of something else the city were to do. Did that address what you're concerned about?
Yeah, I was concerned that, you know, using general funds to support business, and I'm not totally opposed to that, but there comes a time when we have to look at the streets and the sidewalks and all that. That's just from my opinion. That's where I get most of my comments. And so I know we added extra money this year in the budget for that stuff and I'm just hoping that in the future that we could add even more and get some of this stuff caught up. I know it takes $5 million just to maintain the budget and we're a million dollars short of that in our budget, but hopefully next year and the year after that, that we'll start catching up and really taking care of what I like to think of as my hometown, the community, being a native, born and raised here, so.
And I think we all share in that sentiment and appreciate it. And so if we look at reinvesting in the horizontal part of our community, the water and sewer infrastructure, the streets, the curbs, gutter and sidewalk, we're also reinvesting in the buildings and the history of our community. And so it's two different things, but they complement each other to make an overall better quality of life and a better community. And I just wanted, before the mayor cuts me off, Shaney's here, our finance director, and she corrected my number from earlier. So I had said we, I thought we had approximately $700,000 left. We actually had approximately $880,000 left. And so after the $109,000, approximately that was just approved for the Pomona Brewery project, we would have about $770,000 available for this project.
Okay. And I also want to point out that this tax increment financing pool of money is constantly being replenished?
No.
Or is it done? It's terminated?
Terminated with the dissolution of the DDA.
Thank you for that clarification.
But it is in Colorado outdoors.
Yes, we utilize tax increment financing in different ways, but this pot of money is not, there's not a constant stream of money coming into it. So we're trying to be good stewards of that money and allocate it wisely.
And if you don't mind, just really quick, I'd like to say this too, to add to what Bill mentioned, is one thing we haven't talked about is, and I think, Clay, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the projected 12,000 people that will be staying in this hotel on a yearly basis, spending money downtown and raising tax dollars downtown in the area, you know, buying things at the shops, spending on food. I think that's important to mention too, that it's not just the hotel, but it's all the other businesses that'll be raised up for this.
I was heading there.
Perfect.
Yeah, that was going to be my eventual point.
Council dissolved the DDA in June of 2019 and at that time, it was important to council that that money that was in that account and had been collected be used to make a difference in downtown Montrose on projects that were big projects, that that money could really be impactful. We, and again, this was the council's thought at that point, we can do what we want now, but it wasn't to spend that money a little at a time on flower baskets and it wasn't to spend that money a little at a time on banners. It was to do big projects. So I just wanted, for historical context, on what council was thinking about that money in 2019.
And I was going to mention that the fact that the economic impact in our downtown area, one of the things we talk about is revitalizing our downtown, reinvigorating the businesses down there, giving them an opportunity to have enough clientele to stay open past 6 o'clock, go to a restaurant, and have people go downtown and shop. And I think this is a great program and I think this is a great project. And I would love to see if there is no more other discussion. I think we're starting to circle around a little bit.
I just had one more question, back to the one I asked on the other project. Are we getting any other historic money, state money, anything else?
Nothing.
We've outlined it, I might hear that, but we've outlined it in the packet, what the other sources of funds were. Can I help you here? Do you want to use? Sure. I'm in the packet here.
Yeah, because it shows just Region 10 funding of $400,000.
We can ask the applicant as well.
Sorry, I couldn't hear the question. Do you mind repeating that?
Is it the Region 10 piece is the only offset?
Yeah, that's what he told me, but I'd be asking if there's any historic dollars being used.
So the other question, Clay, was is there any other funding sources being used because of the historic designation of the building? Are there any other untapped funding sources that you're aware of?
Yeah, we have applied for state historic tax credits. That will also require more investment to the property if we choose to go that route. So it's not a net gain necessarily for us because of the increased, some increased costs for us to actually be eligible for them. That is the other pot of funding I'm aware of. Outside of that, I do not believe we're eligible for anything else.
Discussion on parking?
Thank you.
I have no further comment.
If there are no further comments and no further questions, we would accept public comment, but there are no members of the public present. So I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor? Go ahead.
I made the last one while you were out of the room.
Oh, okay. I would move to approve a business incentive agreement for the Rathbone Hotel at 33 South Cascade Avenue as presented.
Can you add how the DDA?
In our prior motion, we delineated what the funds were.
Okay, from the former, funds that still remain with the city from the former downtown DDA.
And do we want to specify the amount?
It's in there.
It is as presented, but just for the record.
Second.
All right. Well, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Deb Glazdel?
Yes.
J.D. D. Brie? Yes. A.D. Yuluberry? Yes.
All right. Thank you. That concludes that item. Mr. Bales, I want to thank you for joining us. I understand Zoom calls are still not our favorite thing, but they're a necessary component of doing business. Appreciate your time.
Wish I was there with you all and not dealing with flight troubles. I really appreciate it. And again, this project would not be possible without your all's support. So we are endlessly thankful and look forward to delivering this hotel.
Thank you. I wanted to make one more comment here, if it's just not out of line. I talked to the masonry superintendent and he said, don't expect anything to look really nice until after they finish when they have a special compound that they go and they clean the building and they said, you will be surprised.
That's always exciting.
That's like when tile work gets done and it's the ground.
They got the ground in, yeah.
And it doesn't look right.
All right. Well, thank you all.
All right, thank you. All right, we have one final item that we, I'm adding to the agenda. And it has come to our attention that because of family obligations and holiday travel, we will not have a quorum for a city council meeting on December 20. Having said that, we will have to cancel that meeting. But one of the important agenda items that was on that was the supplemental budget approval. And if you want to talk a little bit about that, Bill, and let everybody know what's going on with that so that we can kind of start looking at planning and what we can do to make that happen.
Sure. We had the second reading of the ordinance for the supplemental budget for 2022, and it's really important that that gets considered and approved by the end of the year. So we get that finished. Shaney is here and I'd given her a heads up that this was, discussion was going to take place. So it's important that we come up with a time, even if it's a short 15-minute discussion and then consideration, to go ahead and do that second reading. We'll have to do the adequate public notice on that, which is a minimum of 24 hours. We prefer 48 because it is in the form of an ordinance second reading and it's of significance. It's a supplemental budget, so we don't want to rush that. And so if we move at least two days in the future, any day between two days from now from now and the end of the year is open.
So we have Thursday and Friday of this week, that because of, after that, we're getting into the travel and family obligations that are pulling people from the regular meeting.
We have a work session the 19th. Can we either precede our work session with a special, with our council meeting, or more after our work session, have a council meeting?
I'm going to be out of town, so.
Our note says you're going to attend virtual for the work session. Has that changed?
I should be able to.
What if we, what if we had a special council meeting at 9:30 to vote on the supplemental budget?
Well, the other question is, will the other four of us be there at that work session on Monday?
That's my question. I can. I will.
I'm here.
I am out of town, but I should be able to attend virtually, I think.
Well, if two of our council are not present, we still have a quorum, and we still have the ability to vote on that. So why don't we schedule a special meeting?
Ann just brought up another consideration. Jim Scheid was going to be presenting the recycling contract renewal. That needs to be done by the end of the year. He was planning on presenting that at our work session and then voting on it the following night because of the timeliness of the recycling contract. Is that okay to add this, then, to the special meeting? And you do, you receive his presentation and vote on it at that same, same meeting?
That's fine with me.
It's a renewal.
I'm going to be here anyway, so what difference does it make?
So why don't we do it immediately following our work session? Or would we rather do it before?
I think we'd rather do it before because I feel like because it's broadcast and whatnot, it needs a specific start time as opposed to a nebulous.
Earlier would be better for me.
Why don't we say 9 o'clock, Monday, the 19th? Does that work for everyone that is going to be present?
The council chambers.
Change.
I will be here.
Okay, so as long as they have a representative presenting, I think we'll be fine. So is it, okay. Well, we don't need you anyway.
All right.
So Monday, 9:00 AM, special city council meeting immediately following. We'll have our regular work session. It's going to be a little bit topsy-turvy. Mr. Scheid won't be able to present the work session item, obviously. So we just need to let him know that we're going to be taking that on the fly.
And thank you for being willing to consider it so that we can have that in place before the beginning of the new year.
This at 9:00. And this is something that we've already looked at in the past, and it's kind of more housekeeping. There's no major changes?
There's updated rates. It is a new contract, but with our current provider of recycling services. So it is not a huge change, but they gave us new rates. And I think you'll feel comfortable entering into it. And Jim is recommending we enter into the contract without any other changes.
Any other comments from anybody else?
Oh, I have not a comment about that, but about our other meeting tomorrow.
Oh, yes.
Sorry, about our Flight Alliance meetings. I got some clarification today at our executive session that we have preceding Flight Alliance. And because we're touring the airport, we're not going to spend as much time chit-chatting around the room with updates between council and the Flight Alliance. However, council is still absolutely invited to join the board of the Flight Alliance for the tour of the airport. So we are starting the Flight Alliance meeting at 11 with a quick executive session. And so I don't want you all rushing there and then being kicked out of the room. So if you would like to join for the tour, it'll be more like 11:20.
Matt Skinner just sent me a text and said, show up around 11:30.
11:30. Great, 11:30.
I do have another meeting at 1:00.
So you are welcome to join the Flight Alliance for a tour of the airport tomorrow at 11:30. But I may have missold it last time because I told you it'd be like a few years ago, when we all sat in a room together and we really introduced each other and we heard from each other. And that's not going to happen. This year, it's going to be a walking, but.
How long do you think the tour will take, probably?
You know, I went on a tour with Lloyd of the airport, and it lasted like an hour and a half. But I think people left if they needed to leave. Yeah.
So she's saying you can leave anytime you want.
Yeah. I wouldn't say an hour, but I think it would take, I think it's going to take longer.
Pulling this back, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.
All right.
Have you had a chance to see the airport construction?
Just from the outside.